Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. A meeting announcement, all council meetings are live streamed on the city's website. Would the Clerk please take the rule call?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger, Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations and in person, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you're able to stand, remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, please be seated. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Agenda is amended. Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. Thank you. And the next order of business is proclamations, and I have one to be presented for breast cancer awareness. Do you want to come forward, somebody here for that? Come up this way. Good morning, come up here with me.
Aye, what's up?
Thank you. Every year I do a proclamation to draw some attention to October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and so I want to make sure that people are aware of that and Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So those are the two proclamations I've been doing every year. So it's been difficult to find people doing amazing work, and then we found you doing this amazing work on behalf of young women in the region. So thank you very much for your work. As just a reminder, please get your mammogram.
Yes, indeed.
Whereas Young Women's Breast Cancer Awareness Foundation was formed by breast cancer awareness survivor Jennifer Kem and friend Lisa Edmonds after Jennifer was diagnosed with breast cancer at a young age. And whereas nearly 12% of all breast cancer cases this year will be women under the age of 45, the mission of Young Women's Breast Cancer Awareness Foundation is to educate and bring awareness about breast cancer to women under 50 and to challenge them to take their health more seriously. Get your mammogram. And whereas, in addition to education, the Young Women's Breast Cancer Awareness Foundation provides support groups throughout the year that help build community and a network of support that is critical during treatment and beyond. And whereas the foundation's fundraising efforts have benefited many organizations such as the Cancer Caring Center and the Patient Navigator Program at McGee Women's Hospital's Cancer Center and private financial grants to women undergoing treatment. And whereas, in the month of October, pink ribbon bagels are sold at participating Panera Bread locations and round-up options are available at the registers to support the foundation's private grants and private therapy through cancer bridges. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Young Women's Breast Cancer Awareness Foundation for their work in bringing awareness, education, and support to young women diagnosed with breast cancer. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 18th, 2022 to be Young Women's Breast Cancer Awareness Foundation Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Can a motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Thank you very much for your work. I'm going to hand the seat, we'll take a photo together, and we're going to have all the members of council come up. I'll give this to you, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You want to say a few words first?
Well, I think you did a very good job, but we just aim to support women under pre-menopausal, basically. It's kind of a sliding scale, but we help to try to support them through education and trying to help them advocate as well as a lot of doctors, and when I was originally diagnosed in 2000, a lot of doctors would tell women they were too young, or they would turn their way, tell them not to worry, and consequently, they were diagnosed at a later stage. So that has been the mission for the past 22 years, really, to educate young women to recognize that they can and do get breast cancer. So as was stated before, I mean, get mammograms, get screened, and if you are under 40, while you can't get mammograms, just be diligent in doing self-exams and make sure you know your body. And thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we have all the members come join us? Is there a number or anything they can call?
There's a website, YWBCAF.
Yeah, I'll tell them.
If you are in need of support, you can reach out to us at the website. It's www.YWBCAF. Thank you.
Thank you. And here you have the proclamation, and here's your second. Your copy. Okay, thank you. And we have one to be read into the record for Mr. Saris. Oh, two, I'm sorry, in conflict resolution. Madam Clerk, can you read them both?
Council President Smith presents, be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, October 17th, 2022 to be Bill Saris Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Council President also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, October 20th, 2022 to be Conflict Resolution and Honoree Selena J. Schultz Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion in a second? Motion to approve in a second?
No moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations are approved. Thank you, everyone. And now we'll move on to public comment. Next order of business, public comment. And I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be for City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And the first speaker I have registered is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
I'm Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, California, and also. Buenos Aires, Argentina. Global Intelligence Society National U.S. Candidate for President 2024. Vote by voter verification and free speech and public comment uncensored are key to what I do, what we do. One comment on the breast cancer issue, men do get it. One of the most famous of these people is Richard Rondry, who is a survivor, is the actor who originally played Shaft. A concern of this council is to gain greater equity using equality, using equity measures to combat institutionalized systemic structural racism and sexism, but how about religionism? Concern of Pittsburgh Council, PCC, is respect for religious differences. The meetings of the Pittsburgh Legislature, PCC, our most important government branch, have been twice altered for Holy Day holidays, Ashishana, Yom Kippur, September 25 to 27, and October 4 to 5, out of respect for religious differences of the followers of Judaism. PCC rearranges meetings for Holy Days out of respect for religious differences of the followers of Christianity. Both, PCC believes, are consistent with the U.S. Constitution of 1789 Amendment 1 and the U.S. Constitutional State. The meetings of We the People of Pittsburgh are not altered for the Holy Days of some of us people, of the followers of Buddhism, Hinduism, Shinto, Wicca, paganism, Taoism, Islam. This is anti-respect of religious difference, a rejection of religious divergence from the main, that the FBI, I mean, the FCI here especially, are Taoism of China and Islam in Iran that the FBI, CIA, and NSA target as anti-American. All are consistent with the National Security Act of 1947 and the U.S. National Security State. But never in a swearing-in ceremonies does a Muslim Imam offer a prayer, always Rabbi of Judaism or a minister or priest of Christianity. Just imagine Mr. Ganey reading the Quran in Arabic or the Ta'awl al-Su in John Wayne. Do any of you do that? You need to be able to do that. This is religionism. You're pro-religious difference, you say, but anti-religious divergence, you do, and I think this is a structural lie.
The next speaker is Audrey Morant. Is Audrey online? She's not online. Jacob Klinger? Is Jacob online? Jacob Klinger, please unmute your mic.
Hi.
Good morning.
My name is Les Ludwig.
Oh, no.
My residence is 6589 Rosemore Street in Squirrel Hill. And I'm here today to talk to you about what do you get for nothing?
Mr. Ludwig, we have a speaker listed in order, I'm sorry.
There's a speaker that's going to speak. Someone else is speaking.
I can't hear. Please.
Please, you don't get to speak next. Wait till she calls you. She says yes.
Oh. Well, I'm sorry, I have a busted hearing game and I couldn't hear.
I'm sorry. If I didn't already call somebody, Mr. Ludwig, I would let you go, but I don't want to disrespect the person waiting. Jacob Klinger? Is he on?
He's unmuted himself.
Mr. Jacob Klinger, will you please unmute yourself? Unmute your mic? Jacob Klinger, one more time. Go on to the next speaker, Zachary Michaels.
Hi, my name is Zachary Michaels. I just wanted to voice some opposition to the increase in police powers to give people tickets for, I believe they're referred to as quality of life violations for things like having your lawn grown too high. I think that's an example of broken windows policing, and I think this is something that will likely impact marginalized communities more so than privileged communities and kind of further, if not increase, then at least exacerbate existing inequities. So I would just like to voice my opposition as a citizen of Pittsburgh. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Bex Tasker. No, not online and not in the audience. Okay. And then our next speaker is Matthew Rubin. Matthew Rubin, online?
Hello. My name is Matthew Rubin.
Good morning.
I also want to speak against Resolution 804. I understand that it is, I don't see it on the agenda save, but it was introduced recently and feel it is really important to speak against this and also think it's really relevant to the discussion for the budget. So often when people come to you every year and say, hey, we need to not have police solution every problem, we need to move away from, you know, the police being the people that come and people need help. We need to move toward like nonviolent solutions that seek to actually help people rather than criminalize people. Every year we all talk about how much we're already doing about that, how you want to do that, and the police union contract stops you from reducing police staff, and we want to do that, but you're just moving it too fast. That's what y'all say every year when public comment ultimately will only ask you to defund the police, and yet there is now a resolution in City Council to expand the powers of police who make the police or can ticket people for things like leaving a trash can out on the curb past 10:00 p.m. on Trash Day. That's just horrifying, and obviously, we would need police to come to solve that tragic community emergencies, which clearly is about quality of life of our community and not property values and giving police extra reasons to over-please certain communities. I think that like, it's really simple to look at that and to realize if you take a second to think about what you've all been saying, great to care about, and what that actually means, that like that will be in a moral policy in pursuit, and I still want you to make sure that like when Resolution 804 comes before you, resoundingly reject it, please, please actually consider doing that. And I want you to think about how, you know, that, how you can take those ideas and you reject that and take it, and so like what we can actually do if we imagine a budget that actually takes care of our city and actually takes care of our people who need help. If someone's lawn is too long, how can we help them rather than criminalize them rather than ticket? We can address real problems by helping.
Okay. That exhauster list of registered speakers, I'm going to go back to Jacob Klinger one more time. Jacob Klinger? Is he on still?
Morning, and you're talking about.
Oh, I'm on the line. Oh, I'm on the line. Oh, I'm in, okay now? Cool.
Please continue.
Yeah, so I wanted to speak to you all about the same resolution that's been mentioned in 804. You know, I think we have a fundamental different understanding about how things work in the world sometimes, but like, there are some things that I think council has acknowledged, which is that like, you know, and that's even passed legislation on, which is that like, you know, increasing the number of contacts that community members have between themselves and the police is bad. Y'all have taken some steps to decrease the amount of contact that people have with the police. There's a recognition in that, that there is a danger in contact with the police, a danger in expanding their powers. And I thought that was commendable, and I also think that's interesting because what we are having now, so many of the problems that we face in Pittsburgh, the fact that we, you know, it's hard to afford rent, it's hard to, gosh, can you imagine, being able to buy a home in the city is tied up and goes back to the way and the places that police are sought out to go and enforce or find crime. You know, all of us every day, whether it be jaywalking or misfiring a form, how they commit some sort of crime, but you know, crime is selectively enforced, and when you see where, you know, places where it is getting more and more expensive to live, harder and harder to stay, more and more people are being put literally into the street, you know, often the police have a role in that. And I'm not just talking about the misallocation of funds. What's interesting to me is that like, as you all know, that there's the danger in contact with the police, as you recognize that in everything you do, at the same time you're expanding police's powers with an explicit mention of property values here. So while you have some understanding of what's wrong here, and again, you're to be commended for that, that loses out when we look at the role that police have in driving up property values and effectively working for the real estate interests and landlords and property developers. And hey, they might not sign up, they might not take on the badge to go work for those folks. They don't take as direct donations as many of your other campaigns do, but it serves the same act, where you're saying, look, we're trying to expand the powers of the police to give people a harder time, and we know what happens after that. People lose their homes, people lose their livelihoods. Many of you, actually all of you on this body, you and I would have pretty severe disagreements about how the government works and should work, but you know, all of you, all of you have acknowledged that like, there is a problem here, and it is, and when I say a problem, you can't even respect the police. I think, you know, Councilman Cocke has said, hey, look, you know, like.
Thank you. That exhauster list of registered speakers, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Mr. Ludwig, now would be a good time.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you for assisting, Ms. Brown.
Well, my name is Les Ludwig. My residence is 6589 Rosemore Street in Squirrel Hill, and I find myself in a very upsetting position. I made no bones about the fact that I felt I should be compensated when I was spending so much time from 2003 forward in making an attempt to show that there were other ways for government to seek finance for its operations other than taxation. And I was successful, and I am told, although I have no record, I am told that it was over a million dollars that came in as a result of my efforts. There's a paving issue of paving under the cars in the parking areas along streets that are four lanes. So you waste the money when you pave under the car because there's really very little wear compared to the road surface. So therefore, why waste the money? And now we have a program that seems to be coming to life in the past year or so. There are a number of you who don't know me, you weren't here in the height of my activity. So what I've done is I've prepared Getting to Know You, like the song, Getting to Know You, Getting to Know All About You. If I can give this to someone for distribution to the members of council, please? Thank you. I was asked to file an invoice by the person in charge of contracts down the other end of the hall, and I'm waiting for an answer as to whether or not I will receive payment. But I promise you, I will not give 10 more ideas that I believe might potentially add up to millions, not one million, but millions of dollars. There's just one which if we can make it work, might be worth as much as $30 million. You want to know what it is? Pay me for 2002 until now. If you don't want to, that's okay. I've managed to get along without you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Have a good day.
And I hope that I can continue to work on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne, excuse me, my name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at K. Lee Roy Overstowers, which is at the top of Beaufort. First, I wanted to bring, make it a little, this is for your information only, that I listen to 90.5 WESA, and they're having a fundraiser. Your telephone number is 412-697-2955. That's 412-697-2955. And I'm saying that I don't have the money to give them, but I know some of you might have $5, $10 that you could. And the only reason why I'm saying this is because this radio station, if you listen, they are very informative, and they tell you things that we don't know, I didn't know. I talked about the Queen when she died, and I was talking about that crown that she had. Well, when I checked into it, there is 317 crowns that they had. One crown had like 3,000 diamonds, rubies, and some other jewels. The only reason why I'm saying this is this, when I listened to 90.5, they were talking about the men that dug the diamonds out of the mines. Do you know that they lived in those mines six weeks in the ground? They would have to pay to get their food to come up and down. Do you understand that this Queen had 317 crowns, that they could change the crown every month? Every month they could have a different crown. They got crowns, and if you seen her, the one when she got married in, it had like icicles, and these are actually diamonds. I'm saying this so you can understand, those beautiful diamonds, they're not hers and they shouldn't have been, and all those black men that died in the ground giving her and all their family those crowns. I don't understand how that happened. I want you to understand that I thought she was the welfare queen. They talk about welfare queens here, she was a welfare queen. What did they do? All they did was make rules and go and have parties and stuff. Do you understand why black men died for her to look pretty with all the diamonds? Also, I listened to, I did not make that meeting last night, my daughter called in, and she was questioning this again about why we don't have a bus going down to the Mercy Hospital? And I say this, and I keep saying it, because anytime Kraus, I want to know where he got his buses for, for the drugs. Remember, they used to have to park on Second Avenue? Then they'd take them to the bar, then they'd bring them back to their car to go out in your own neighborhoods to kill yous. But yet and still, you're just wondering why they're having the problems over on South Side? Kraus started that, because you get selective policing, selective. Thank you, I'm going. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Flora Shapiro-Williams, and I am a resident at K. Lee Roy Overstowers. What I would like to address today, we already have limited parking spaces there. Now, these scooters are taking up our place. When they invented the scooters, they should have made a place, a pickup place to come and get them, but they pick them up right in front of our building. That is two parking spaces that someone that lives in the building has to park three blocks away to walk home. Now, I think that is ridiculous that they didn't have, make a plan for the scooters to be picked up. And most of the residents up there, and Arbor is all about money, and I understand that, but most of the residents up there don't have a caring about where they live. They need to take more pride where they live. I'm going to start going to their, they have meetings in the building, but they are just so, they're not organized, and people are talking over people. They need to watch and see what really it's about. When you come and address the problem, they sit and listen. They don't. Now, I want to acknowledge the Breast Cancer Month. I have a daughter-in-law that's 10 years cancer-free right now. I'm just so excited about the work that they're doing as people to put in for the cancer research. That is so very important, and there's a lot of black people that's suffering with cancer, breast cancer. And I would just like, wake up! Please wake up and find out, do something about it. If I'm sitting here and I'm talking and people are listening and nothing's being done, just wake up and find out what's going on, because one day you're going to be old, believe me. If you live longer than. the breast cancer. My, I have a daughter-in-law that's ten years cancer-free right now. See, I'm just so excited about the work that they're doing as people to put in for the cancer research. That is so very important. And there's a lot of black people that's suffering with, uh, cancer, breast cancer. Woo, and I would just like, wake up! Please wake up and find out, do something about it. If I'm sitting here and I'm talking, and people are listening, and nothing's being done, just wake up and find out what's going on, because one day you're going to be old, believe me. If you live long enough, you're going to be old, and I hope you get treated much better than some of us are being treated. I thank you for listening, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Have a good day. Some of us are already there. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Bernadette from Beachview.
Good morning.
And, um, I used to be a therapeutic foster parent. I was told the only one in the South Hills. Um, at, at any given time, I had up to five teenage girls that were cutters, suicidal ideation. I'd load up the girls in the Astro van, and we'd have to go down to the deck at West, um, West, uh, Western Psych. I'm saying this because I know you guys want to help the kids. There's this economic divide that has gone unseen. We have mobile health units to the immigrant population, mobile health units for the homeless population, mobile health units for breast cancer awareness. It boggles my mind that still in a pandemic, and these kids last year, every time they had a sniffle, they sent them home. Well, depending on when your, your symptoms began, it could be five days for that one. I could tell you right now, my kid was sent home twice last year with suspicions of COVID. Coming back to school, there's a lot more kids, we know this on the news, suicidal thoughts, cutting, eating disorders, it's there. They need therapy. We have onsite therapists, but UPMC, the welfare version of the insurance, denies those kids the help. So when Johnny and Suzie from the hood go and get, try to get therapy at school once a week, they're denied. Johnny and Suzie from the higher insurance family, they get to be seen. They step out of class, they go and have therapy, and they go on. Then the parents from the hood, the poor, the poor, and I'm one of them, we get threatening, we get threatening letters. I had kids placed in my home years ago, and I'm still in touch with their parents, who were placed because of school attendance. Still, the school district did not change. They still say you can only be absent ten times a year in a pandemic. No. Somebody, I hope somebody is hearing. This needs to be fixed. And really quick, our policemen are forced to be domestic violence, marriage counselors. Now we're trying to have them be lawn, garden, and garbage refuge guys? Why don't we put the blinking lights on the garbage trucks and have the garbage men become domestic violence, uh, folks and give out speeding tickets and parking tickets? Doesn't make sense, does it? I'm one of the old folks. I need to take some, some garbage bags that are filled with, uh, clippings. I can't because it's not November twelfth.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. Have a good day. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Reverend. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number eight thirty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Tourism Fund for the Arsenal Renovation Phase One Project in the amount of four hundred twenty-eight thousand seventy dollars for this stated purpose. Bill Number eight forty, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with Power Construction Company for the construction phase of the CBD Signals Phase Four Project and Providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed three million eight hundred twenty-two thousand two hundred and one dollars and twenty cents.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number eight forty-one, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for seven seventeen and seven nineteen Eureka Street. Bill Number eight forty-two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance to Enter Into a Permanent Easement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for the Installation, Maintenance, Repair, Operation, and Removal of a Sewer Line on City-Owned Property. Bill Number eight forty-three, Resolution Authorizing the U R A of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interests, if any, in into the following publicly-owned properties in the fifteenth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block Fifty-Six F, Lot One Seventy-Six, located at two oh one Glen Collage Street. Bill Number eight forty-four, Resolution Authorizing the U R A of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interests, if any, in into the following publicly-owned properties in the thirteenth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block One Seventy-Four N, Lots Eighty and Eighty-One, located on the east side of North Homewood Avenue between Hamilton Avenue and Formosa Way, and formerly known as six oh eight and six ten North Homewood Avenue. Bill Number eight forty-five, Resolution Authorizing the U R A of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interests, if any, in into the following publicly-owned properties in the twenty-fifth and twenty-six wards of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block Forty-Six J, Lots Two Oh Nine, Two Ten, Two Twelve, Two Nineteen, Two Twenty, Three Thirty-Seven, and Three Forty-One, and Block Forty-Six N, Lots Two Thirty, Two Thirty-One, Two Thirty-Two, Two Thirty-Four, and Two Thirty-Five, located along the west side of Wilson Avenue between Burgess Street and Drum Avenue, and along the east side of Wilson Avenue between Cutler Street and Perry'sville Avenue. And Bill Number eight forty-six, Resolution Repealing Resolution two ninety-six of two thousand and twenty-two, effective June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing the U R A of Pittsburgh to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interests, if any, in into the publicly-owned properties in the twentieth ward of the City of Pittsburgh designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block Nineteen G, Lots Two Seven Fifty-Six, One Thirty-One, and Two Oh Six, Block Twenty M, Lots Seventy-Eight, Seventy-Nine, Seventy-Seven, Seventy-Eight, Seventy-Nine, and One Twelve, and Block Twenty S, Lot Forty-Six.
Thank you. And Councilman Crowe, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Good morning, Madam President. No new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number eight forty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Julie Marie Smith in the Amount of three thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and ninety-five cent in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Her Vehicle from a City Public Works Vehicle near twenty-two fifty Center Avenue on October twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one. Bill Number eight forty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Marshall, Dennehy, Warner, Coleman, and Goggan, P.C., in an Amount Not to Exceed thirty thousand dollars for Expert Legal Services related to Litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number eight forty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Spillman, Thomas, and Battle, P L C C, in an Amount Not to Exceed thirty thousand dollars for Expert Legal Services related to Litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number eight fifty, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Thomas, Thomas, and Hafer, L L P, in an Amount Not to Exceed thirty thousand dollars for Expert Legal Services related to Litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number eight fifty-one, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Summers, McDonald, Houdock, Guthrie, and Rouch, P.C., in an Amount Not to Exceed thirty thousand dollars for Expert Legal Services related to Litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number eight fifty-two, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number eight eight six of two thousand and twenty-one, effective December twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-one, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two through Two Thousand and Twenty-Seven Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Flood Control Projects by one hundred ninety-six thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents and Increasing Slope Failure Remediation by one hundred ninety-six thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents. Bill Number eight fifty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreements with Agencies to Provide Emergency Shelter Services, Street Outreach Services, Rental Assistance, and Housing Relocation and Stabilization Services, and/or Data Collection Activities as Associated with Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Emergency Solutions Grant Funds at a Cost Not to Exceed one million one hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars. And Bill Number eight fifty-four, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation to Provide Administration and Operating Expenses, Housing, and Housing-related Supportive Services to Persons with HIV/AIDS and Their Families at a Total Cost Not to Exceed one million two hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Human Resources. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number eight fifty-five, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number eight eighty-six of two thousand and twenty-one, effective December twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-Two through Two Thousand and Twenty-Seven Capital Improvement Program, so as to Identify Specific Public Service Grant Projects in City Council District Two, District Three, District Four, and District Eight, and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement or Agreements for Operation, Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh. And Bill Number eight fifty-six, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure. Under Title eleven of the Code of Ordinances, the certain property known as four one two Boulevard of the Allies, located at four one two Boulevard of the Allies in Downtown in the First Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The City is the owner of the property.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings. One new paper. Thank you.
Council President Theresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number eight sixty, Resolution Instructing the Director of Parks and Recreation in the Department of Public Works to amend the Rules and Regulations for Sports Field Permits to Provide Priority Use to Athletic Organizations Comprised of City of Pittsburgh Residents.
Thank you. And unfinished business. We'll now move on to unfinished business, and we need, um, Madam Clerk? Sorry. Thank you. And we have, uh, four appointments.
Bill Number seven seven three, Resolution Appointing Alan Cisco to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a Term to Expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Bill Number seven seventy-four, Resolution Appointing Aster T. Clay to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a Term to Expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Bill Number seven seventy-six, Resolution Appointing Deidre Washington to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a Term to Expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. And Bill Number seven seven seven, Resolution Appointing Morgan Overton to Serve as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board for a Term to Expire April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
So, Madam President.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye!
Appointments are all approved. Thank you. And congratulations to everyone. Thank you for your willingness to serve. That moves us on to our next order of business, which is Reports Committee for Final Action. And we'll move to Councilman Lavelle for Committee on Finance and Law.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number eight thirty-two, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number seven ninety-six, Resolution Amending Resolution four sixty-nine of two thousand and twenty, which authorizes the Mayor and the Director of Finance to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with C H R Catering Company, Inc., for the Purposes of Providing the City of Pittsburgh with Beverage and Snack Food Vending Services through Vending Machines.
Thank you. You've heard the reading, the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor, it's passage. We'll vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Aye!
I'm in control of my audio. Did you call any members?
Yes. Ms. Gross. Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Public Safety Services. Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Madam. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number eight thirty-three, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number eight fifteen, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter Into an Agreement or Agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the Purpose of Receiving and Spending Grant Funds in the Amount of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, with the Local Match of twenty-eight thousand dollars for the Purchase of Fire Attack Packages, Hoses, and Nozzles to Replace All of the Frontline Attack Packages for the Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire.
Thank you. You've heard the reading, the title of the bills. The bill, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor, it's passage. We'll vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye!
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number eight thirty-four, Report of the Committee on Public Works for October twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number four seventy-six, Resolution Granting a Vacation of an Unopened Portion of Bryant Street, laid out in the Morningside Manor Plan of Lots, as recorded in P B V thirty-one, page two, in the eleventh Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number seven ninety, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with the Larson Design Group, Inc., for Costs Associated with West Ohio Street and Ridge Avenue Bridges Project, providing for the Payment of the Cost thereof not to exceed eight hundred thirty-two thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-four cent, an Increase of seven thousand twenty dollars and four cent from the previously executed agreement as previously authorized by Resolution nine twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. You've heard the reading, the title of the bill. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Gross.
I was trying to communicate with Councilman Coghill. I need a motion to amend by substitution on 2022-0476. All members have the yellow copy in front of them, and the members online have the emailed copy.
Do we have a motion? We have a second? Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Bill's amended, and now move on to the final vote for, is there any, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill's having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Human Resources. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 835. Reported a committee on human resources for October 12, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 797. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contract with NeoGov for the continual maintenance of software for HR workforce management, applicant tracking, and civil service testing, and providing for the payment of the cost thereof, cost not to exceed $36,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final passage, or final action. All in favor is passage, or aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 836. Reported a committee on land use and economic development for October 12, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 799. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to enter into many grant reimbursement agreements for the 2022 Love Your Block Program at a cost not to exceed $20,000. Bill Number 800. Ordinance accepting a new street name, Herzog Way, in the 27th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh, as per recommendation by the city of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in September of 2022. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code, Title IV, Public Places and Property, Chapter 420, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor is passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill's having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Erica Strasburger presents Bill Number 837. Reported a committee on innovation, performance, and asset management for October 12, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 798. Resolution amending Resolution 541 of 2021, authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with Monday.com, an online project management and portfolio management tool for use with multiple city departments by increasing the not-to-exceed amount to $106,000.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor is passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill's having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 838. Reported a committee on intergovernmental affairs for October 12, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 792. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of the URA in the amount of $350,212.91 for an extension of our previous land care contract. Bill Number 793. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Allegheny County with respect to the winter seasons of 2022 to 2023, 2023 to 2024, and 2024 to 2025, November 1 to March 31 of each year, under which, A, the city will store, handle, and load salt for the county, and B, the county will store, handle, and load salt for the city. Two, A, the city will perform snow and ice clearance together with the application of anti-skid and/or de-icing materials for certain county roads, including bridges with their approaches, and B, the county will perform snow and ice clearance together with the application of anti-skid and/or de-icing materials for certain city roads, including bridges and their approaches. And Bill Number 794. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 451 Melwood Avenue.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor is passage, or aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bill's having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 0698 as it relates to the historic designation of the Murray Hill Historic District Expansion. Speaker registration closes at 12 noon today. Councilwoman, are you cheering that? Okay, thank you. And tomorrow, Wednesday, October 12, council will meet for the standing committee's meeting at 10:00 a.m. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. It'll be chaired by Councilman Lavelle. Also, Wednesday afternoon at 3, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on urban agriculture and food equity, providing the Food Policy Council ambassadors an opportunity to present their policy recommendations. Speaker registration will close at 1:30 Wednesday afternoon, and that meeting will be chaired by Councilwoman Gross. And I am going to probably join that meeting by Zoom, Councilwoman, because I have at the same time my orientation for the Alka-Sam Board. Also, to register to speak at any of these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline, or you may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members? Councilwoman Burgess?
Yes, I would like to call for a post-agenda on the Pittsburgh Plan for Peace and the group violence initiative program.
Move a motion, move a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get that scheduled, Councilman. And anything else from other members? Seeing none, can I have a motion to excuse, well, there's no absent members, excuse the absent member and approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.